Welcome to the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners meeting, and we'd like to call that to order. And we'd like to call on Commissioner Turner to lead us in the prayer. Then after that, Mr. McAdoo will be leading us into pledge to the flag.
Let's pray. Father, again, thank you for the opportunity and the privilege that each one of us has been afforded to sit in these chairs, Lord, and I ask that you be with us tonight in our discussions with the decisions that need to be made, that our actions and our words and our deeds, Lord, that they honor you, that they come from our heart and they're pure, Lord. I just ask that you be with those who are watching at home and those who are in the audience. Thank you, Lord, for the privilege that we have to live in such a wonderful community and a wonderful country. We ask all these things and all these blessings in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Piercey.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Commissioner Koush.
President.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Nipper.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Commissioner Kaplan.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Sereno. We have a quorum, 21 present.
Thank you very much. Okay, you have received a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Do we have a motion concerning their approval? Commissioner Phillips.
Mayor Burgess, I've reviewed those minutes. I find them in order, move that we dispense with the reading and for their approval.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Koush? All right. If no one else has any corrections or additions, then we're ready to vote. All of you in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next, we'll call on Commissioner Johnson to read a resolution of sympathy with respect to a fine lady named Millie Evans.
First, let me say, I had the privilege of meeting Millie in 1998, and a lot of y'all have heard this old saying that so-and-so didn't know the meaning of fear. Millie did not know the meaning of what shire was. So, she was a fine lady, but the resolution of sympathy, whereas it was with great sadness that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Miss Millie Evans, a friend of Millie, and whereas Miss Evans is survived by her husband, Al Evans, and nieces and nephews, and whereas Miss Evans was a member of First United Methodist Church, and along with her husband were owners of Murfreesboro Insurance Agency before their retirement, and whereas Miss Evans was a former chief of civilian payroll at Seward Air Force Base, was an avid golfer and former champion of the Senior Ladies Golf Association at Stones River Country Club, and whereas Miss Evans is probably known best as co-founder and past president and board chairman of the Beasley Animal and Humane Foundation, which offers low-cost, spay-neuter services, and she was a staunch advocate for humane treatment of animals, and whereas we know that her passing has caused a great sadness to her family and friends, now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, at its regular session on the 17th day of March, does hereby extend sincere sympathy to the family of Miss Evans, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Miss Evans by the clerk of this litmus.
I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Phillips and Cook. All right. All of you then in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous, and we do recognize her many, many years of service in animal care and concern. Okay, we have two people that wish to speak tonight regarding public comment that they might have, so first, we have, I'll remind you to come forward and give us your name and address, and you're limited to three minutes as we always have in place here. So, Mr. Tim Powers.
I'm Tim Powers, and I have land on Zero Bravil Road. It's off the road, doesn't have an address, but my property taxes on my land in Donald's Chapel have increased 129 percent since the year 2000. And my dad and I did build a pole barn, but it was under some trees, so even if they did take a picture, it wasn't trimmed in gold. A little background, my wife's family moved to Murfreesboro in 1986, and her parents wondered why there were no impact fees or development taxes back then. They lived all over the country. They haven't. If they knew, then our local government also knew. Rutherford County finally passed the first development tax in 1996, 10 years later. Except for impact fees in the Vernon 98 and Smyrna 99, there have been no increases in 20 years. Question: Has growth in property taxes increased in 20 years? This ongoing robbery reached a tipping point for me in 2003, when the county commission voted to add 29 cents to the property tax rate. It was about that time that I joined the RNA, Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance, and learned about politics. I addressed the commission back then about the art of taxation is like plucking a goose. You pluck it to get the most feathers with the least amount of hissing. Now, fast forward to now, I'm reading the paper Saturday, and it says, "Rutherford County examines development fees." Déjà vu. Please do not waste your time or money on committees or research. Contact the RNA or TASER, the Tennessee Advisory Commission on Intergovernmental Relations. They've done all the studies and all the groundwork you ever need. Solution: It's the hypocrites in the Tennessee General Assembly who can approve new taxing tools. They say they want government to be local. They always say that. They name their bills local, and they do just the opposite. They tie your hands by not giving you away to tax growth. And honestly, most of you do not want tax growth either, for the fear of slowing down your revenue stream, which in turn would hinder your borrowing ability. So, it's a gain both ways. Please refuse to increase our property taxes at any costs. When the schools threaten to close the doors, or they threaten not to have a football season, stand strong and point to the Assembly in Nashville. I saw the conservative assembly fold on school vouchers this the other week, when the TSBA, Tennessee Board Association, applied a little pressure. Let the teachers, let the football parents apply that pressure for you. All of y'all, 21, vote no on property taxes. And then, you will get an alternative tax, hopefully an impact fee, but you must have the fortitude. Fortitude to be good shepherds to your citizens and not slaves to growth. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, Sheriff Robert Arnold.
Evening, Sheriff Robert Arnold, 552 Osborne Lane. I just want to be real quick. I handed out to each one of you commissioners a letter from the deputies. It's a book that we all sat down and were discussing when we're talking about our budget this year and in previous years, of the concerns that we have as the sheriff's office and as a deputy patrol in the streets. So, we came up with the idea of putting this book together, from the patrol deputies and supervisors, to you, the commissioners, of their concerns, of their jobs and the duties that they do. So, I ask for you to please read this, consider this, especially when we go into budget this year, because of these issues that are going on with these patrol officers and the needs of the county. I can tell you, just today, we had a burglary out off of Halls Hill Pike area, and some young people were coming inbound. It turned into a pursuit, and we had about six kids, six young people flee. It ended up costing the county half of our patrol division to go after these, because what happened was, they stopped in the middle of the road. They all fled, except for one. The car kept going, so now we had the pursuit going inbound into town, and we had six people going six different directions, and we had to get deputies to go out there and chase them, and to catch the suspects. And we did, but when we do stuff like that, the rest of the county is shorthanded, and that is becoming the norm lately. And so, I just wanted to drop this by and let you know and give you this and publicly let you know. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, elections and confirmations, Commissioner Turner.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. Commissioners, you'll find on your iPads a list of notaries that need to be approved. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
And a second from Commissioner Sereno. All right, if there are no additions to that, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Steering would also like to announce four vacancies and one alternate vacancy on the equalization board. Steering would like to announce a reappointment of Steve Harrison to the Smyrna-Rutherford County Airport Authority Board, and Steering would also like to announce confirmation of the reappointment of Mac Nolan to the Central Tennessee Solid Waste Planning Board. Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
And Mr. Turner, on that fourth one there, if you would make a motion to that, I think we need to confirm his...
On the appointment of Mr. Nolan, I make a motion for his approval.
Yes, and a second from Commissioner Koush and others. All right, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is a resolution to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Phillips.
Mayor Burgess, I've also reviewed that agenda, found all of those items inappropriate and in order, and I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion? Anyone want to make any changes? All right, then, on this particular item, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Okay, record the votes, please.
21 yes, motion passes.
Thank you very much. Okay, we don't have any unfinished business, so we will not be able to start on our reports by standing committees, and we'll call on Commissioner Jordan.
Good evening. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. Sheriff's Office, increase expenditures, food supplies, $250,000. Decrease expenditures from utilities, $100,000, and from unassigned fund balance, $150,000. This is to move more money into the food line item, of course. Resolve this 17th day of March, 2016. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a second from the Mr. Reed and others. All right, any questions or discussion? All right, if not, then please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Okay, record the votes, please.
21 yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Item L1A2, establish in-house probation service. Resolution: Whereas misdemeanor probation is currently being supervised by a third-party vendor, and whereas the county has been notified by the third-party vendor that will terminate its services on March 31st, 2016, and whereas the county will begin supervising misdemeanor probation with county employees on April 1st, 2016, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Department of Other Administration of Justice be established by general fund, and additionally, that the general fund be amended as follows, to recognize the revenue from probation fees and appropriate said revenue, to appropriate said revenue to the various line items to establish the department budget. Other administration of justice, increase revenue, probation fees, $344,504. Increase expenditures, probation officers, $172,189. Social Security, $10,635. Pension, $19,455. Employee dependent insurance, $44,625. Disability insurance, $310. Employer Medicaid, $2,490. Communication, $5,400. Contracted private agencies, $9,900. Data processing services, $3,900. Maintenance agreements, $9,000. Maintenance repair of buildings, $600. Postal charges, $1,200. Rentals, $25,500. Other contracted services, $15,000. Office supplies, $3,600. Utilities, $3,600, and other supplies and materials, $17,100. And this is just to finish out the remainder of the year, basically a quarter of a year, I think, until the end of the budget. Resolve this 17th day of March, 2016. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner McAdoo. Discussion.
Mr. Jordan, what is the total of the expense?
Yes?
That first number, the 300?
Forty-four thousand.
That's total revenue, and does the increase in expenditures, is it balanced? I was just curious.
Yes, it does. For every motion, a second. All right, there's no further discussion then. Please cast your votes. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to offer up a couple of amendments to this. The first one is that the director of this program be required to provide the commission with a detailed breakdown of revenues and expenses for the first six months, and so I would move that we amend the resolution to include that.
All right, do we have a second? Commissioner Kaplan. So, Mr. Clerk, the amendment is to have a detailed report of the revenues and expenses provided by the director at the end of the first six-month period. All right, so first...
Burgess, just for clarification...
That was each month.
Oh, each month? Okay, excuse me.
Just clarification, does that go through the committee process, like public safety? Is that where it would go?
That would be fine.
Okay, so, how would we craft that motion, Mr. Stevens? Are you going to recommend that public safety take that up as an issue and bring that forward? Is that your amendment?
That they report, just like any other department, would they bring a detailed breakdown of their revenues and expenses to that committee?
Revenue expenses each month would be reported by the director to the Public Safety Committee. All right, so you have that changed, Mr. ... All right, any other discussion on the amendment? Okay, all of you in favor of that amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed to the amendment? Mr. P., let him be recognized as being opposed to the amendment. Now, Mr. Stevens.
Okay, amendment two, I would make a motion to amend this resolution to place this back on the commission's agenda in six months for review.
All right, do we have a second? Commissioner Kaplan. Now, it will come through the budget process for the next calendar year, so that'll come back as, you know, required. So, this will be just another checkpoint, is what you're saying?
The department's going to need a few months to get up and running well, and I think six months is plenty of time for them to establish their operating procedures and see what kind of money's coming in, what kind of money's going out, and I think if we know that it's coming in six months, that we'll be able to keep a good check on those monies that are coming in, the monies that are going out, and we'll be able to make a good decision about whether we're going to continue the program or if we want to look for other alternatives.
Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, what do you have down there for our motion on this second amendment?
Six-month review of the new department, especially where their budget's concerned.
Now, we're going to be giving monthly reports to the public safety, which will be available, then what do we do at the end of the six-month period, Mr. Stevens?
The amendment proposal was that it would be reviewed by the full commission in six months to evaluate the program.
So, the report that we've been giving to public safety will be compiled and summarized for six months, and then we'll bring that forward for your consideration, just as a report from the Public Safety Committee. Okay, so, you have that somewhat properly worded there. All right, then, is any further discussion about that amendment number two? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner P., no. All right, now then, are there any other amendments or discussion? Are we ready to vote on the motion? Which, you're calling for the question, I don't think anyone is rising to say anything else, so we're ready to vote, so please cast your votes on the motion.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All have voted, so please record the votes.
Seventeen yes, two no, motion passes.
Motion passed, seventeen to four. All right.
Item L1A3, lease for property for probation services. This is the building that houses the same thing we just voted on. Whereas the county will begin to supervise misdemeanor probation on April 1st, 2016, whereas property owned by Middle Tennessee Investments and located at 309 West Main Street in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, has been offered for lease on a month-to-month term at a rate of $8,500 per month to house this service. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and the county attorney of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to negotiate a lease with a month-to-month term at a rate of $8,500 per month. Property located at 309 West Main Street in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, resolved this 17th day of March, 2016. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a second from that particular, Commissioner P., questions or discussion? Okay, I don't see anyone rising. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Now, everyone has voted, so please record the votes.
Eighteen yes, three no, motion passes.
Very much.
Item L1A4, school board future building plan. Resolution: Whereas there's a need to renovate and expand schools due to growth in the area, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education is prepared a five-year capital plan to demonstrate the future needs of the school system, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education desires to proceed with the following projects at the estimated cost that's approved by the various county committees. Rocky Fork Middle School, $31,932,000. Smyrna Middle School renovation, $9,371,000. David Yury renovation design, $220,000, for a total of $41,253,000. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that funding for the above-named projects in an estimated amount of $41,523,000 be authorized from a future bond issued for the construction, constructing, equipping, architect fees, and other costs for the project, resolved this 17th day of March, 2016. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Mayor Allen, a second, and others, I'm sure. Now, any questions or discussion? Okay, there being none, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Item L1A5, transfer fund from employee insurance to flexible spending account, and this is just basically advancing funds until the money comes in and housekeeping to some extent. Resolution: Whereas at the regular meeting of December 17th, 2015, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution authorizing a transfer of $75,000 from Fund 264, Employee Insurance Fund, to Fund 334, Flexible Spending Account, and whereas employee deductions are collected over the period of a year, but unreimbursed medical claims can be filed at any time during the year, which could cause a flow shortage, and whereas there is a need for an additional transfer of $75,000 to avoid a cash shortage, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that a transfer in the amount of $75,000 be authorized from Fund 264, Employee Insurance Fund, to Fund 334, Flexible Spending Account, in order to make payments for unreimbursed medical and dependent care claims until employee deductions are collected, resolved this 17th day of March, 2016. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a second, Commissioner Piercey. Anyone have any questions regarding this matter? If not, then please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item L1A6, presentation of the State of Tennessee Approval Letter and the State Form CT-0253 for issuance of capital outlay notes. This is presentation only, no actions required. This is just, if anybody can't sleep later on in the night, just be in their agenda item, and you can read through this, it's required, it's presented to the commission, and it's just a letter approving $15 million capital outlay note, but that's information only. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that very much. All right, we do not have a report from the Health and Education Committee tonight, and, all right, on the Property Management Committee, we probably have enough time, Mr. McAdoo, for you to produce, present one resolution here.
Hey, this resolution here is something that we probably should have done last month, but we've already approved everything, but we need to give the PBA permission to proceed on resolution. Whereas the attached agreement for construction of a judicial building center between the Public Building Authority of Rutherford County, Tennessee, and Rutherford County, Tennessee, provides for the construction of the new judicial building center and any associated structures and improvements to meet the needs of the citizens of the county, and whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County for the county to execute said agreement with the Public Building Authority. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials be, and they hereby are authorized to enter into and execute, fund on behalf of Rutherford County, Tennessee, the agreement with the Public Building Authority, a copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, resolve this 17th day of March, 2016. I so move.
Second, Commissioner Phillips and others over here, the Turner, et cetera. All right, any questions? Any discussion? If not, then, please cast your votes, please.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Thank you very much. It is now 6:30, so we do have one rezoning request, which requires a public hearing, and this is rezoning request 16-A003, on behalf of Michael and Nicole Byrd, property located at 2519 East Main Street. The existing zoning is residential medium density, and the proposed zoning is commercial services on a site of approximately .6 acres. Mr. Demose.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. The subject property is located at 2519 East Main Street. The applicants are requesting to rezone the property and redevelop it for use as a contractor's office. Contractor's offices are classified under our zoning ordinance as what's called construction, sales, and services, and these are uses that are allowed by right in the commercial services zone. The applicants have stated that they plan to construct a brick building with parking in the front and the back. There's an exhibit to this application in your agenda packets, which are included on your iPads as well. I included another file on there that kind of gives you a pictorial tour of the area. We present those to the planning commission. I thought you'd like to see that as well, so I put that in there in case you wanted to take a look at that. If this is approved, a site plan approval will be required. We'll look at things such as the access, screening, parking, and other related items on that. There wasn't a whole lot of discussion about this item at the planning commission. One of the planning commissioners did comment that any improvement on the property would be welcome. The planning commission ultimately did recommend approval by a unanimous vote, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Want to have any questions, Mr. Demose, about this rezoning request? All right, Mr. Demose, we'll stand aside till we have the... All right, Mr. Demossi, we'll stand aside till we have the public hearing. So, anyone that's here that wishes to speak for or against this rezoning request, now is your opportunity to make your comments, so if anyone wishes to speak, please come forward, give us your name and address, and make your comments, please. All right, I don't see anyone here that wishes to speak, therefore, the public hearing is closed, and we're ready for a motion. Commissioner P.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion to approve with the planning's recommendations.
And Commissioner Dodd and Cook there, together. Anyone have any comments or questions they want to ask? If not, then, all of you in favor of that motion, please say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, thank you very much. Now, we're back on regular agenda. There is not a report from public safety. Commissioner Jernigan, there is one resolution from Public Works, please.
Public Works has one item, proposal to rescind action taken by the Rutherford County Commissioners. I'm on the wrong one, excuse me. Whereas the Rutherford County Highway Department is responsible for certain county roads in Rutherford County, Tennessee, and whereas TCA 55-8153 authorizes the Rutherford County Commission to prescribe speed limits as it may deem appropriate on any road being maintained by Rutherford County, and authorizes it to erect appropriate signs, and whereas the Rutherford County Highway Department has recommended and requested a 40 mile-per-hour speed limit, and appropriate signage be posted on Central Valley Road and Leanna Road, designated county road. And whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has recommended said speed limit being imposed for the safety and welfare of the citizens of Rutherford County, Tennessee, and the maintenance and preservation of these county roads and persons traveling there on. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners as follows: that the maximum speed limit be and the same shall hereafter be 40 miles per hour for all motor vehicles traveling on Central Valley Road and Leanna Road. Speed, said speed limit being deemed appropriate and reasonable by the Rutherford County Commission upon recommendations of the Rutherford County Highway Department pursuant to TCA 55-8153, resolved this 17th day of March, 2016. I so move.
And second, Commissioner Nipper and Jordan. Anyone have any questions regarding this resolution? If not, then, all of you in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much, thank you, Commissioner Jernigan. All right, next, Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee. Commissioner Gooch, we do have one resolution, please, so you will present that, I'm sure, very well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Steering does have one resolution for your consideration, Commissioners, this evening. This is a resolution to approve a private act for a fourth General Sessions judge with support personnel and assistant district attorney and assistant public defender, and approve the resolution creating a private act. Whereas, Mr. Chair, it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County that the private act attached heretofew as Exhibit 1, attached heretofew as if copied herein at length verbatim, be adopted, and that upon ratification, Private Acts of 1947, Chapter 384, be amended by the Rutherford County Commission. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, that it respectfully request the Tennessee General Assembly enact a private act attached heretofew at Exhibit 1. Be it further resolved that Private Acts of 1947, Chapter 384, be amended in such time as the Rutherford County Commission ratifies the proposed private act attached as Exhibit 1 heretofew. Be it further resolved that the county clerk is directed to immediately send a certified copy of this action to the legislators representing Rutherford County, even if Mayor Burgess has to run it up to Nashville early tomorrow morning before the crack of dawn, Tennessee. Resolve this the 17th day of March, 2016. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Okay, man, everyone, let's see. Mr. McAdoo, all right, he wants in on this. Okay. Now, then, questions, concerns? Okay, we've had a healthy discussion. Commissioner Jordan.
Are we sure there's time enough for this to get through the General Assembly? And if not, what happens if it does not make it through the legislature before they adjourn?
Well, we have been assured by Senator Kethron and Representative White that they have put this in place that will be timely and will be passed. Now, if it doesn't, for whatever reason that might be, that we don't know, it would have to, it's dead until next legislative session. You'd have to come back, we'd have to wait a year.
It'll be down at the crack of dawn tomorrow morning, I'm sure. It'll be down at the crack of dawn tomorrow, I'm sure.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, sir, Commissioner.
If you would please just remind me, educate me, and perhaps listening public, how is this funded? Is it county funds, state reimbursements, just that budget just increases by all this personnel?
This is 100% county funds. There will be no money from the state, and if we ask them for anything, they'll tell us they're not going to do it, and they won't approve our private act. And it's about, I believe, Commissioner Dodd, I believe that it's around $500,000 per year that this will cost. Now, it won't be that much, because this will be a partial year, the first year, it'll only be effective September the 1st of this year, if it's passed, and so, but on an annual basis, it's in the neighborhood of 500,000. It won't be that much for the first 10 months. Commissioner Jordan.
Not trying to get up too many times, but there is some cost savings associated with this, as far as having the court at the jail, not using all the officers to be transporting near as many people, not as much overtime as far as the security at the courthouse and things like that, so this isn't all this money out. There is significant cost savings coming back with it at the same time.
Yeah, for the sake of clarity, I think it'll make us much more efficient and proficient as well, so I'm in support of this, but I needed to confirm that question.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions or discussion, then? So, really, there's not any money actually here, so we just, we don't have to have a roll call vote. I think it'd be wise, though, let's have a roll call vote, so please record your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All right, please record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Gooch. Now, under any other business, Commissioner P.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind the action taken by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners on February 11th, 2016, that amended the county's retirement plan to the plan otherwise known as the Herbert Plan.
There are second. Second, Commissioner Jernigan, Jordan, okay, and others.
Mr. Chairman, the point of order-
Commissioner Stevens.
Does the motion to rescind have to be brought by someone who is on the prevailing side?
Let our attorney here answer that question, please.
It does not. It does not have to be brought by someone on the prevailing side. If it is a motion to rescind...
That would be true if it was a motion to reconsider, which would have had to have been made at the previous meeting. Other questions? Call for the question, do we have a second on that? Second, all in favor of calling for the question, please say aye. Opposed, so that motion passed, question's been called for, please cast your votes. A no vote would be not to rescind this action. A yes vote is to rescind this action. So, check your pads so we don't have someone else that says they made a mistake this time. A yes vote will rescind the action that you took at the last commission meeting. So, read that little statement again, please, Madam Clerk.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Okay, then, you're ready to vote. Please record the votes.
Eleven yes, ten no, motion passes.
Action has been rescinded. Is there any other business? Whoa, not even an announcement. Well, some of us thought we might be out here before nine or 10 o'clock, but this is amazing. If there's no other business, thank you for your participation and your preparation, and we are adjourned.